I'd like to call this meeting in a Dalton Select Board order, please. All those who are able, please write for the pledge and Edward, you have your pledge, please.
Pledge of command, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Brittany, will you do the roll call, please?
John Rataw.
Here.
Mike Straub.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Edward Harvard.
Here.
And Mr. John Boyer.
We have Ken Wollstone.
Here. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain motions for the minute of April 9th.
If you don't mind, Mr. Fisher, I'm going to separate them. I make a motion, we approve the minutes from April 9th, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any corrections or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Okay, motion four.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from April 23rd, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further comments or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
I abstain.
Public to address the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or a company or institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designated. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone who wants to speak to any of the items on the agenda? Al?
I don't want to speak to any of the items on the agenda. I just have something to say to the board and I put all my comments in writing so that I don't have to take any more time than I have to. But I was here the night you guys appointed me to be on the cable board. And shortly thereafter, I received the first letter from the administrative assistant. I wanted to make certain that I was entitled to see that letter because it was originally addressed to you, Bob.
Right.
And I did talk to you and you gave me a comment that it was okay by you.
Right.
So I followed up and I did send an email to the gentleman who's, I think he's chairman of the Telecommunication Commission. My email is on the bottom. His response to me's on the top, on the second sheet in the third page. And I read that, it's telling me that the public's not going to be invited to these meetings. There's only going to be two, the one in North Adams and one in Lenox on the same day, one at 11:00 and one at 3:00. Taking an hour for travel and lunch, that doesn't leave an awful lot of time to hear from the public and they're not going to, the public's not invited. I'm not even sure that members of cable commissions are going to be invited or allowed to speak. Sounds to me, by his reply, that this is primarily for elected official leaders of the communities, be a mayor and selectman. So I read that. And I think there's an awful lot of problems that we are having with Spectrum that need to be addressed. And all they've got to do now is eliminate one more channel out of Springfield and we'll be locked out of Massachusetts television. And we shouldn't accept that. Maybe the time has come when the communities of Berkshire County ought to take over the cable system by eminent domain and then hire somebody else to run it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, do you want to turn number seven, possibly?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Amy Lennon. I am at 193 West Housatonic Street in Dalton. And I am here tonight to request that the board approve my daughter to go to Smith Vocational High School.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard?
Richard Hall, 164 Green Ridge Drive. If I can just be recognized for number six, that would be great. And just to, not by expecting comment, but just following up on the other gentleman's comments, it seems strange that these aren't open to the public, these meetings, that should be public input into these meetings. Just a comment. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Larry Ward, 645 Old Windsor Road. I'd like to say, I appreciate all you people do for our community in your service. I think it's a great community. The Highway Department, I think, does a very good job. But living on Old Windsor Road, it's been two to three years that I haven't seen potholes like this anywhere in my life. And we were here a little less than a year ago, myself and some of the residents. And you people were responsive and I've heard through the grapevine that something's going to be done. I can tell you, they haven't patched anything on that road since once maybe, you know, after Hot Patch came out. With the exception of this past week, they've done some paving, no doubt to make a good foot forward for people going to graduation to Akona. And I applaud that. How are you going to get people in this town if they drive to that school and see what is with this road? So, first of all, when is it going to get taken care of? And also, it was about nine or 10 years ago, I'm guessing, when it was done before by Warner Brothers, I believe it was, out of Sunderland. I thought they did a very good job. In, I think, less than two weeks' time, they did the whole job. And I'll, I say all they did, because I guess, I have no idea how long stripping down, grinding, and then repaving should last. Maybe it lasted as long as it should. But I think right now is the time to start planning for eight to nine years from now what to do with that road again. I know, we don't have deep pockets, believe me. I've got to work at how I'm going to pay my taxes this coming August. I know that you guys work on all that all the time, fine. But I'm sure that the Highway Department has better things to do than field calls and try to patch that road, just whenever they can get to it. There must be a better way. Well, I understand we have a town planner. Is the town planner working in conjunction with the superintendent of the highways about what the priorities of streets for major reconstruction is? That ought to be one. That's main artery to the hill towns. I don't know, maybe there's some way to talk with the state, get grant money between Peru, Hinsdale, Dalton. Pittsfield has main utilities coming down there. Maybe we can get some help to, you know, do that road, put some more drainage on that road, do something right in the future. So at this time, I don't know if you have or are willing to give me any answer, if you know when the road's supposed to be paved.
I spoke to John Roughly today and he's hoping within two weeks. They were up there yesterday or this morning? And they looked at it with the company and they're supposed to kick off in two weeks.
And who's John?
John Roughly, the superintendent, the highway superintendent. So JBL is doing the project and they were up there yesterday or this morning and they're supposed to kick off within two weeks.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry for your frustration. Unfortunately, there's a lot of planning to go into it. The town did put a lot of sewer easements across, not sewer easements, drain easements across there to save money. And they're working very hard to correct the problems. Okay? All right, thank you. You're welcome. Can I go back and listen with the cable thing? No. Yes. Ah, let's see. If I can go to the one, one of these, would it be okay if I also invited Al to go with me? Because he's an expert on this stuff and...
It says on the email back to Al that cable advisory committee members are welcome.
Yeah. I mean, I could go, but a lot of it will be creaked to me. So if I had somebody in there that...
I think that's a good idea, that Al would go with you.
Has the committee met at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
It would be good to gather thoughts of everyone before that meeting.
It'd be wise, they have more than one or two to...
And if you take a couple of them, Al, I don't care if we take the whole committee.
Yeah, I've not spoken to any of them. I have no idea what any of them, what else any of them think. But I would suggest that if we go to any, we go to the one in Lenox because I suspect the one in North Adams is going to be for Charter. And we're Time Warner. Like it or not, we're still Time Warner.
That would probably be the prudent thing.
That's the 3:00 meeting.
Yeah, that's on the 22nd of May.
Yes, they're both on the 22nd of May.
Yeah, how convenient, huh? Okay, if you wouldn't mind contacting others on your commission and...
John, you're one of them, right?
Yeah, there you go. But I think the more we can get to go, the better.
I would like to see more than one select board member down here because quite frankly, if we're going to have to negotiate a new license agreement with Spectrum, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure what Spectrum is. On the back of the bill, they're called a brand name. Our payments are made to Time Warner and sent to Time Warner if you mail them. So where does Spectrum get its money? They must be just the service arm of both Charter and Time Warner.
Could be.
And if we got, if somebody, if the towns have to negotiate a license agreement with them, I think we ought to have a lawyer who is up on telecommunications. We shouldn't be doing it with laypeople.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm getting.
Would anyone else like to join us?
Well, if I can change my schedule, I'll go. I have a kind of flippant work, but I will try.
Just let me know if...
Actually, it's a week from tomorrow.
Right.
Yes. Yes, it's a week from Tuesday, right?
Right. Dan Downer, 41 Golf Road, Chairman of the Dalton Fair Association.
We just want to speak to Article 8 on the list.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, sir.
Ian Filio, Emergency Management. Myself and Lauren Garrity from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission are here to discuss Article 10.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, item six, petition for joint or identical pole locations on Housatonic Street, Eversource and Verizon.
I make a motion, we approve the petition for joint or identical pole locations on Housatonic Street, Eversource and Verizon.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
We have a representative here from Eversource.
Oh, good. Travis Walsh. Before we get started, do you have the sketch?
I don't have a sketch.
Oh, we don't have sketches, no.
We have an explanation of location.
Are you helpful for me? The main purpose of this is to eliminate the Dalton substation, to relocate poles and install, to facilitate the removal of the substation. It's the final phase of the project. It's up to upgrade most of the town to modern 23,000 volts to improve reliability and replace the outage equipment. The relocation of the poles is to move them closer to the road to mitigate future tree issues, make them more accessible by bucket truck, and also to allow space for substation removal. The installation of the poles is to support new switches to replace and improve switching capability housed in the current substation. Poles will vary from height from 45 feet to 60 feet, depending on the existing conductor heights and field conditions and equipment.
Okay. Any comments?
I don't remember what was in this as for time, a time period when this was all going to take place. Is it immediate upon our approval or...
I would believe yes.
Okay, and then the duration of the work? Because you're going to be ripping out the substation too.
The substation work could probably be after the immediate pole sets, the eight poles.
Yeah.
And the change of the work would probably be a couple of weeks, I believe.
Do you know what the time period is? Are we getting rid of a lot of these dual poles that are already up?
Unfortunately, no. It's a contractor that actually removes the poles.
Is there anybody that can give us an answer in your company?
Sure, I could report back for that.
Well, right now, it's Verizon that has to do the removal of the poles, the existing poles.
Right.
That are still up.
Mm-hmm.
And from the information we've received from one of our residents and what we've known before, when we were talking about this last, I don't know, fall?
Last fall, yeah.
Something like that. Supposed to be a 60-day or 90-day period. And does Eversource notify Verizon of these? When your work is done on a pole and say, hey, pole 64 over 70 is ready to be changed over?
Yep, absolutely, we do.
Okay. And is there follow-up after a certain period of time?
We can reach back out to them, but fortunately, I know that given their workload, we have a difficult time getting a timeframe as well.
Okay, we would appreciate if you could find out what's going on for us.
Sure.
Okay, motions been made and seconded on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Does Richard, do you want to be?
Oh, I think you, sorry, I guess I'll say one quick word and then we can move on. It was actually me that looked into the regulations and the old poles have to be removed in 90 days. So I think one of the points was to look at the whole town and at its projects, we've still got a lot of poles left from last year. Obviously, the winter, it's understandable, everyone's busy doing other things, but I think just to illustrate what's being said here, it's reasonable and I guess there's a database that everyone shares. So maybe an update on all the poles throughout town and when the double poles are going to come down. Because it's also starting to be tourist season here.
Right.
So it's better if we only have one pole in place, not two.
Is there, if I may, is there a contact person in Eversource that we can contact?
Absolutely.
With regard to this, I know it's probably not you.
Fortunately.
It is now.
Yeah, who is it? I mean, you're, do you have a, do you have a name or...
I could possibly give you supervisor that could give you better information.
That would be great. And if you could funnel that through our office or through the town manager's office?
Yeah.
And then you can funnel it through your office and maybe between the two, we can get something done?
Sounds good.
Okay. Because we have, it's been like nine months. Yeah.
It's been a while, yeah.
Understand.
All right, okay, can we move the motion? All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item, petition for late admission to vocational education program.
So I had submitted a letter on behalf of my daughter. My daughter had written a letter as well. And I apologize for the tardiness in applying for acceptance into the Smith Vocational School. My husband and I truly didn't even ever think of our children going anywhere else but Wakona. And by the time she had expressed an interest, the deadline had already passed for Central Berkshire. But I do feel like she would really benefit from this program. So I was wondering if you would consider that.
They are still accepting applicants?
They are. We actually, we went on Friday and we saw the school, she loved it. They are still accepting. They're just waiting to hear if Central Berkshire would sign off on that first.
Okay, and Central Berkshire will sign off if we approve it, the sound of orders?
Once, yes, they said once that Central Berkshire signs off, they'll, they admit on a Ruber X grade and all of her records have been forwarded. So they're just waiting to start that, to see if she would be approved. They did say that she looked like a solid student, so we have our fingers crossed if we get approval. Thank you.
Any comments?
It isn't unusual for us to grant this. We've done it in the past over the years. I think the, personally, I think the request is one that isn't unusual and has validity. And I would be in favor of this. The reason it has to come through us first is because of the tuition that we, that the town pays and then we just tell the school that, yeah, go ahead. So I'm in favor of this. I think it's necessary and I'd like to, I'd like to see this go through.
Okay, I totally agree with John. She seemed like a solid student, solid reasons, and I totally support this.
I also do.
I make a motion, we approve Keegan Lynn's petition to attend Smith Vocational High School.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Have we got to notify the school? Do we notify the school or do you know of this determination?
I think we do, but they'll go and tell us or we'll know if that school's not approved or not.
Okay.
Okay, are you going to take care of that, Ken? Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again. You all right?
Just dropped.
Water bottle.
So we hate my agenda, sorry.
Here, here. I got my packet mixed up. Go ahead, I'm just talking to myself here.
Okay, make sure everybody's okay. Item eight, the CRA Carnival. Dan?
Yeah, Dan Downer, 41 Golf Road, one of three members, the Dalton Fair is run by the Fire Department, Dalton CRA and the Benefit Association. Allison Peters from CRA is here. Dates are June 6th to the 10th this year. Dates are pretty much, their time's pretty much the same. We open at 6:00 on Wednesday, and it closes around 10:00. That'll happen the same on Thursday. Friday, we usually stay up until 11:00, there's fireworks in the evening. And then on Saturday, we open at noon, which is a wristband day. Noon to 5:00 is a pay one price. And on Sunday, we have it again, and we also have fireworks again on Saturday. We're just looking for permission from the select board to have the carnival, as we do every year.
Okay, I think the carnival's an awesome thing of getting all the town groups together, get out there and raise money. There's a lot of people from the town that go to this. I think it's a great idea. Who else?
I miss the petting zoo. No, seriously, seriously, folks. When I had kids, kids really loved it. I don't remember why it was ever discontinued. Somebody didn't want to pick up things up. I don't know. I don't know, but that's just a personal comment. I think it's great and you do, you guys do a good job, but throwing it out there maybe for future years or maybe bring it back.
Question for the board. I am in the Lions Club and we have a booth there. Should I recuse myself from this call?
Well, I don't think...
It's not going to make a difference to the outcome.
No.
Yeah. But if you feel more comfortable recusing yourself, go ahead.
I just assumed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the Dalton Carnival for Wednesday, June 6th, 2018 through Sunday, June 10th, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you, thankless John. Okay, next study agenda, approval of net metering agreement with Rockwood AG Grid LLC.
We're going to call Beth Greenblatt as we have in the passenger seat.
Coming up very soon.
I'm going to update us on...
I'm going to put you on speakerphone.
Hello.
Hello.
Happy spring, everyone.
Finally.
Yay. Even out there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so Ken, where would you like me to start?
Probably with a brief overview of the agreement before then, the status of that agreement, and then go on to BBD and the status of that agreement, and then open it up for discussion.
Okay, sounds great. So you have to, for you, as Ken had mentioned, a partially executed agreement with the digester, the Rockwood AG digester, for, as you know, 220,000 kilowatt hours a year. It's a 10-year agreement. So the estimated projected economic benefits are about $3,500 in the first year, growing over the 10-year term of the contract to just $137,000. So that's that project. And the offer, as you know, is a 15% discount off of the public net metering rate. Net metering has been locked in. The project is fully complete. It is mechanically operational. It is just not yet interconnected to the grid. So while they're generating biogas and are able to use that biogas, they cannot feed it into Eversource's distribution network yet because Eversource has not interconnected it. So that's next on the list. And that's something that, you know, unfortunately, everyone is sort of at the mercy of Eversource in their timeframe. And it would be true of all utilities because they're looking to interconnect all these projects. The, but before you sign that, there's some other things that we want to talk about. And Ken had asked me to sort of check in with the BBD folks and find out what's going on. And in the course of us, over the past several months, trying to finalize the details of the contract, which quite frankly, were completely non-controversial, there was no issue, several things transpired. At the early part of the year, the BBD team, it's my understanding, separated their business venture. And Mike Viner, who's the V in the BBD, went his own way under a company that he had actually had already in place, Energy Price Management Group. Some of you may have heard of them. And instead of collaborating on projects collectively with Todd Driscoll and others, they sort of split up their projects based on, I guess, their respective involvement in the project. And Mike Viner was able to keep the Hinsdale project under his company, Energy PMG. They signed legal agreements, demonstrating such. When they were, when we were negotiating the contract with them earlier in the year in the sort of February timeframe, they advised us that this change of ownership or change of, I guess it's change of ownership, was going on. And asked if we would modify the documents to reflect EPMG and not BBD as the counterparty in the documents. And on advice of counsel, we asked to see the legal documents that actually allowed for that transaction to occur, to demonstrate to us that EPMG was now the rightful owner, if you will, of this project. On a side note, Mike Viner, who's the president of EPMG, also owns the land in Hinsdale, his property, probably why the project is his. And so... in Hinsale, his property. Otherwise, the project is his. And so, again, this may be more formal for substance, but until that legal trail was fully vetted and documented, it really would have been imprudent for the town to execute an agreement or just simply change the name of the counterparty. Because otherwise, as I said to Ken, what could have happened is you end up in a custody battle, which, in a divorce, which is not something you want. I understand that the parties are all friendly and that this was a business decision on their part. I don't know much about it, other than they've decided up their assets. So Mike has indicated he's happy to provide us that legal documentation. But in the meantime, over the course of the past three months, Mike has had an unfortunate series of personal difficulties that really sidelined his ability to get this project moving forward in the expeditious manner he had hoped to do. There were a few deaths in his immediate family, like three of them, just horrible, in a sad state. And Mike, I guess as the oldest child, was responsible for sort of seeing things, picking up the ball and dealing with all the, the family stuff. As a result, he has indicated to me that his original intention to, and he was difficult to reach over the course of the past two months. He went pretty silent because I think in part he was traveling and also dealing with all of the various difficulties in his world. Nonetheless, he did indicate to me a couple of days ago that he did not feel confident he could get the project built under what he thought was the final extension of the SREC 2 program, which was initially intended to end in July of 2018. But, and, but what was also, as part of the design of the transition between the SREC 2 program and the SMART program was there would be a seamless sort of transition. So the SMART program would kick in, the SREC 2 program would stay in effect until the SMART program kicked in. And the latest news we all have is based on the adjudicatory process that's going on at the DPU with initial briefs and follow-up and response briefs, and then the DPU order. It's expected that SMART won't be fully implemented until mid-August, at the earliest. So I'm guessing late August. With that being said, that gives Mike an additional month to get the project built. Now, there's a bunch of other things going on that could cause some delays for him, and I'm not going to go into all of the details, but some of it is tied to availability of equipment at a reasonable price because of the import tariffs, that I think we've talked about in the past. And so that's a sort of a project risk. If Mike can't get his hands on modules soon enough, it may delay his, and cause him not to be able to build it under the SREC 2 program. So when he and I spoke last week, he indicated to me that if he were able to build it now, under the SREC 2 program, with this extension through August, there is, there is a reduction in the amount of benefits he would get, and that's basically the design of these extensions, that the state has, has sort of imposed on the continuation of the SREC 2 program. He indicated to me that he would go back, look at his analysis, and tell us if he was able to build it under SREC 2 by the August timeframe with the reduction in benefits, whether or not there would be any impact in the financial offer that he had given us, which, as you may recall, was 17.5% discount with no floor off of the public net metering rate. He got back to me this morning and told me that indeed it does have a material impact, and that his offer would have to decline to 15% discount with a zero, you know, with a, with a zero floor and off of the public net metering rate. I then followed up with him and asked him if, in fact, something happens, and he's not as successful as he hopes, and he's not able to build it under SREC 2, and instead does build it under SMART, does that have any financial implication to the town for what he's able to offer? And he said, no. He said that basically, the SREC 2 program, with all the various reductions and benefits, comes out from a financial perspective in their model about the same as what he can do under the SMART program. But notwithstanding, if the town still decided to move forward with them, I would have language in this contract that protects the town from further negotiation, and quite frankly, compensates the town for any further due diligence that would need to happen, subject to some, any other change. So what, what Ken asked me to do was to look at the last analysis you saw, and Ken, I don't know, I apologize if you got my email leaked. I don't know if you had a chance to see it?
No, I just, I just left a room and checked, and I didn't receive it.
You did not see it?
No. Unless it went to my junk mail. I did not see.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Unless it went to my junk mail, but it wasn't in my regular inbox.
That's strange. I sent it about an hour ago. In any case, what I did is I looked at where we were originally, and I can try to send it to you again, Ken, if that will be helpful. Where we were originally with the combination of 280,000 net metering credits from BBD, and now it would be EPMG, and 220,000 net metering credits from the HCOG, Rockwood AG digester, and, I'm sending it to you again now, Ken. And the total economic value over the 10-year term from the combination of both projects was just under 90 grand. And then, over the 20-year term, you get an additional 10 years for the solar project versus the, the digester. The total economic benefit over a total 20-year term is about $144,000. That was the original offer. Ken asked me to look at that very same sort of structure of the arrangements, but change the offer to what BBD is now offering, which, if you recall, originally, the digester met the BBD offer of 17.5% discount, but after we only took a portion of the net metering credits the town could take, they lowered it to 15%. So if you were to continue with the EPMG project, formerly BBD, both of the projects are 15% discounts, as opposed to 17.5% for EPMG and 15% for the digester. So the total overall economic benefit over the 20-year term drops to about $129,000. So with that change from 17.5% to 15%, over the 20-year term, you lose about $15,000 in what would have been, you know, energy, electricity savings, or, you know, a financial benefit. So that's sort of where the offer is now with, with BBD, now EPMG, and the digester. So one, the other, last piece of analysis I did, Ken and I talked about, and I will then be quiet and let you guys ask some questions, was to go back to the digester folks and say, well, if instead we bought 500,000, all of our net metering credits from you, can we go back to the original offer of the 17.5% with a zero cent floor? And they said, yes. So I, on the third page of a document you haven't seen yet, apparently, it is a 10-year deal, and so there, to the extent that technology is still operating efficiently and effectively, there could always be a potential for an extension, but it is an initial term of 10 years. The total economic value over that 10-year period is 90, is just north of 97,000. So it's about a, going just with the digester for 10 years versus the digester and the new offer from, from EPMG, the loss of economic benefits, about 30 grand. That's the delta. But it's a 10-year deal, and you're buying all of your net metering credits from, all of your net metering credits that we have calculated. Again, you have potentially some additional appetite, depending on what the town does, with a variety of other things, like streetlight upgrades and, and other energy efficiency improvements. You have the potential for some additional net metering in the future, if you decide to do so.
Beth, Bob Bishop, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Now, did you go back to BBD and see if they could match the offer if we bought it all from them, if we can get to 17.5% discount?
I didn't. And the reason I didn't is because, I understand the delta in the economics. For the, the digester, because their project is already built, they, they know what they're carrying, what their economics are. That's pretty straightforward for them. I can certainly ask Mike if he's willing to improve his offer if he gets 100% of the net metering credits.
We should do that.
My only concern for you would be, I think the town has, has made representation to the digester folks of its intent to purchase, and we have a partially executed agreement, which I think we negotiated in good faith. So I think that would be, could be somewhat problematic for the town, but I'm not town council.
We also had an agreement with BBD, didn't we not?
We had a verbal agreement with BBD based on, yes, we had a verbal agreement with BBD to buy 280,000 kilowatt-hours from them. And I'm not suggesting that you not buy them from them. They're willing to continue to sell 280,000 kilowatt-hours to you, to you folks. It's just their offer declined because of the, the change in, in the, the value of the SREC.
Beth, this is John Bartels. There seems to be an awful lot of what-ifs with BBD, which kind of scares me right now. What are your feelings about that? I mean, the only thing that we have to worry about with the, with the Rockwood is when they're going to hook up to the grid, by the sounds of it.
That's correct. Rockwood is, is a done deal for now. They're just waiting on EverSource. I think there are some risks with BBD, depending on how, I mean, honestly, Mike, Mike Weiner seems highly motivated to get this project done. It's his own land, so he doesn't have those, those issues. He has fully entitled the project with all the permits that were required. I think, you know, and, and he's going to own this project. So I think the path to success is there. The question is, is when? Will he make it into the SREC 2 program? That's a, my opinion, that's a 50/50 proposition. I feel better knowing that if instead it's built under the SMART program, that he will continue to move forward under the same commercial and financial terms that he's offering us now. I think the risk for him is, Western S Electric has a limited amount of capacity in the SMART program. It's just the nature of how this program has been designed. And because of that, he's competing with every other project in Womiko's service territory to apply and get in under the highest value for solar projects under SMART. So if you all recall, SMART is being implemented in eight 200-megawatt blocks, of which the first 100 megawatts of the first block was competitively bid, and the second half will be taking in applications starting in mid-August. The, the share for Womiko, because they're such a small utility, is pretty small, and yet you have a lot of land out there. So there's a lot of projects vying for that capacity. So it's possible that Mike won't make it into the first block, possible, and if he doesn't, he's going to be in the second block. The second block has a declining incentive. So as long as he doesn't change the offer, it just means his revenue stream is reduced. So yes, there's a lot more uncertainty about his project right now, because we don't know what, what, which program it will be in, and we don't know if in the SMART program, which block it will be in. We may not care if it doesn't have an economic impact on us, but that's just more uncertainty to the project.
With the 10-year agreement with, with Rockwood, we, at the end of the 10 years, we can still re-up with them, correct?
Well, you know, their argument is, this is a, the useful life of the equipment or the, the warranty, and useful life is a 10-year useful life. And so they were only willing to contract for 10 years. My guess is, the owner of the project, unless there's some strange thing that would cause him to do otherwise, will likely repower the facility and keep it going, and would likely very, be very anxious to move forward under a longer-term relationship. But for now, they can, they are only able and willing to commit for 10 years.
And BBD's still committed to 20 years?
Yeah, EPMG is still committed for 20 years, yes.
But we don't know that they can get this done by August.
No, but they're saying if they can, they're going to apply for the, the SMART program.
And with...
They're not going to change our economic offer. We would just make sure that your contract documents do two things. One, lock in the economic value by tying it to a certain, to certain metrics that ensure that the economic value that we're projecting is what you're going to see. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, for some reason, there's some opportunity for them to terminate the agreement. There's some financial penalty. He may say, I'm not willing to take that risk, but I think it would be imprudent not to at this point.
Beth?
Not to have contract, you know, language in there that protects you in the event of yet another change of, of offer.
Beth, Mark Stroh, what you're saying now, can we write it in the contract, give him six months to get it up and running, or get us enrolled in a program, or himself get enrolled, enrolled in a program? And if not, we could go with Rockwood and do the whole 500,000 through them?
I think the risk you have is Rockwood may be fully subscribed by that point, and not have any capacity to sell you, which I would expect they would, that would be the case. I would, I would expect if they haven't, I mean, I'm, I was almost surprised that they still have some capacity left.
I personally...
It's a risk. You don't know, I mean, they're not, they're certainly not going to reserve it for you.
I mean, although we had a, a verbal agreement with BBD, now EPMG, they are not able to fulfill the terms and conditions of the agreement, which was to give us a 17% discount. That materially changed, could materially change the Wood's philosophy about going forward with this project.
Technically, Rockwood isn't either.
Well, Rockwood said, they'll honor their original offer to us. If we give them the whole load, they'll give us the 17% discount, which they said they couldn't do if we didn't sell them the whole load.
But we, we need to add...
Either way, we can go, either way, we can go with Rockwood, whether it's with a partial amount or with a full amount.
Yeah, want to go, yeah, it's ready to be executed for 220,000 kilowatts.
And when would it be expected to be on the grid? Is there any type of timeline?
So Rockwood is anticipating within the next couple of months, EverSource should be fully interconnected. It's, it, that's their best guess. I mean, it, it could be sooner, it could be later. It's completely outside of their control. It's all under the control of EverSource, and how much work they're able to get done to meet the needs of these distributed generation assets. I don't know what's entailed. This project isn't that huge. I can't imagine. It's an enormous interconnection cost, but the type of facility that it is, and EverSource is a relatively conservative utility to, specifically, but this is a more of a baseload asset, because it's, it runs all the time as opposed to solar, which is more intermittent. So EverSource needs to make sure their infrastructure can handle it. So the best answer is a couple of months, which is pretty typical. They were up and off, they were mechanically complete in April, as they anticipated, and now they're just waiting on EverSource to finish their piece.
How far along is BBD in their project? I mean, other than...
Fully permitted.
That's it?
And they're, they're fully permitted, and, well, so EPMG is fully permitted, and they have an interconnection agreement with the utility. They could absolutely, with our participation, apply for net metering and get a cap allocation. And I am encouraging him to do that.
How about, how about financially for the, the actual worksite? How about financially for the actual worksite?
It's my understanding, he may have done some clearing on his own land, but until he had all of his permits, he couldn't construct anything. Apparently, initially, according to Mike, initially, when he went to the town in Granville and asked if he needed to obtain a special permit, they said no. And I went, when we were, Ken and I were working on some of the administrative stuff behind the scenes, I went on Granville's website and I looked, and of course, it says, "Yes, you need a special permit for a large-scale solar array." I reached out to Mike. Mike called the town again, and the town said, "Oh, no, you absolutely do." So I'm not sure if there was some, that set him back about a month and a half.
That's Hinsdale.
And they expedited that for him. So it's fully entitled. It's got all its permits, all its non-ministerial permits. So he hasn't pulled his electrical or building permit, but he's, and he doesn't need to do that until he starts construction. But he has all his major permits, CONCOM and planning board. And he has his interconnection services agreement with the utility. So he just needs to get his house in order, order equipment, so get his contracting done with off-takers, apply for net metering, which if the town of Dalton is the host, we would facilitate that process by supporting his application. And Ken has already started some of that, not committing to EPNG or BBD, but just setting up something in the event the town becomes the host of our project. And then order equipment and start construction. But it's not my understanding that he's done much on the site. He may have done a little clearing, but that's about it.
Beth, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, I was just going to ask one more thing. What's the downside of, what's the downside for us if we go all with Rockwood?
Well, there's less capacity coming out to 10-year deal, which may be plus or minus. It's a different profile. So with a solar project, you're going to get more economic benefits in the summer. With the digester, you're going to get it relatively consistently year-round. I don't know if there's a downside to either one of them. I think as we talked in the past, it was more of a sort of hedging. You were using a digester for part of your opportunity that was more of a level benefit over the course of the year. And then you had these spikes with solar for a longer period of time.
Beth, Mark Stroh, we brought you on because you're the expert. And safe to say, none of us are an expert. What's your recommendation on this?
Well, unfortunately, that's a hard question for me. I mean, I think clearly the digester is more of a sure thing. It's built. They're just waiting on the utility piece. And then you'll start to see economic benefits accrue relatively quickly. It's a shorter-term deal. It's a 10-year deal versus a 20-year deal. That may be positive, but again, that's a business decision for the town. I don't really have an opinion either way on that. That's up to you. I think the BBD, the EPNG project, I think once we get through some of this administrative stuff and Mike thinks moving on it, I think, I've seen projects that he was involved with that he's built. So I believe he will ultimately get this constructed. The timing on it, I just don't know, whether it happens this summer or for some reason it gets delayed for other reasons that may be outside of his control, like equipment, availability, that kind of stuff. It could push it out longer. So I think they're business decisions. And it's really a decision on the part of the town. Do you want to be in longer-term deals? Again, both of the contracts, you have out provisions, you have out clauses that allow you to terminate after a certain period of time. You know, I think with all of the uncertainty that still exists with Mike, it's just a riskier proposition. And it's only risky because there's still so much uncertainty in terms of which program he's going to be in, the impact it has on his economics, if he's getting money from outside sources, does that change their profile? And there's just some, there's enough uncertainty on his side that it just prevents opportunity risk for you.
You know, I tend to agree, or I tend to agree with the sure thing, going with the sure thing. I can't believe that Rockwood, after 10 years, would not improve their site and continue on doing what they're doing if they're able to sell their credits out now.
So I'll just give you one sort of side note. In a prior life of mine, I was involved with a lot of cogeneration projects. And the big issue was the spark spread, sort of the difference between the input fuel, the cost of that input fuel to generate electricity versus purchasing electricity directly from the grid or a third party. And the delta between the two was a real driver on the success of cogeneration. I would say this is exactly the same thing to the digester. So the question is, is the availability of the input fuel, which is a combination of cow manure and food waste, which we expect will continue to exist going forward, versus the alternative, which is electricity. And I don't think any of us think that electricity costs are expected to decline precipitously. So that spark spread, that what makes these economics good for them to build this project, I think will likely continue to exist. And so repowering it, whatever they need to basically rehab, whether it's a new generator or whatever they need to do to keep the generator operating, I would tend to think, unless they sell their land for other purposes and it's no longer being used for its current purpose, I would tend to think would still exist and they'd want to continue to operate it. But there's no guarantees, and they're not making any.
Well, we don't have any guarantees that Mike's project is going to be complete either with what's going on.
No, we don't. I think his intentions are real. I think he intends to build it under either of the two programs. It sounds to me, I'm pretty convinced that he has done his economic analysis. But, so those are more certain, but there's a lot of uncertainty still that exists.
Would everybody be comfortable entering into the agreement with Rockwood and then fast-tracking, getting it straight and dealt with, BBD, EPNG?
The current contract?
The current one we have right now for 220. That way, and we'll get it settled with EPNG, and that way, we can figure out, and if we're not, we jump on board for the other 280 back with Rockwood.
Well, we may not be able to because...
I'm talking within the next week or two, find out from Mike Finer.
I don't know that we're going to know in the next week or two if Mike's going to be able to fulfill this because it's all conjecture on his part and wishful thinking. And yes, his intent is there. I don't doubt it. He's a businessman. But there's still a lot of uncertainty in his program right now, much more than there was before. We have the chance to jump on with 17.5 with Rockwood for 10 years. And I, as I said, I just don't feel that they're going to stop after 10 years unless...
I agree. Actually, I thought the Rockwood one was the one that was going to be risky for us to get into. I thought the BBD one was like a done deal, like it was, you know, it's kind of flip-flop.
I mean, I think it's reasonable for you to ask Mike or one of his colleagues to come in and convince you that his project will be a success. I mean, I think we've jumped through, I mean, this has been going on for a while. Again, he's had some, you know, extreme personal difficulties with the loss of family members, which I think we can all sympathize with. But you're now in a situation where your, you know, your expectations of when these economic benefits might accrue are substantially delayed. And some uncertainty as to whether or not the project will succeed.
Maybe it is a good idea to wait a week, have him, offer him to come in at our next meeting. And if he can convince us, that's one thing. And if not, we then decide what we're doing at that meeting. Sounds good to me.
Can you, so let me ask you this question. Can you guys call a special meeting? The reason I ask that is, I mentioned to, I told Rockwood that I would get back to him and let him know what we're doing.
I think you have another meeting.
If the town signs the agreement in hand, you're agreeing to have a 15% discount. So, because that's what's in the agreement. So we would not want to do that if you are anticipating taking more from them. And, right? If we're taking more from them, we want greater benefits.
Yes.
Okay. The other complexity that I think Mike's project has is because the size of the project, in order for him to maximize, to do two things, be able to first build the project and maximize the revenue, he needs to build basically two projects on the same site. And while that's not a big deal, it just requires just different accounting. It's viewed differently by investors. So getting some sense of assurance from him, given all of what we know now and where his economics are because he's missed the boat on sort of this last phase of SREC II, this final phase of SREC II, as I said, got a 5% decline in the economic benefit to him. So just getting a sense that he actually has the money lined up to get done what he wants to get done. So I think it's a combination of, do you really think you can do it? Do you have the financial support to get it done? If you don't get it done under this project, what is the risk to us? Is it under SMART, but you don't get in the first block? And I'm certainly happy to come up with a list of questions. He can come in and, I mean, he can certainly respond in writing too. But I do think it would be beneficial for you to sit across the table from him, ask him questions and get a feel for whether or not you think that... It sounds to me that you folks would like to give this project opportunity. First of all, it has good economic benefits, but this project is, you know, an opportunity to proceed. And you need to have a good, strong feeling, if in fact that's the case, that there's a path to success.
Do we have a week?
I can, I'm sure I can buy a week with Rockwood.
Because we're meeting next week, right?
We've been requested to have a special meeting next Monday.
Oh, that's...
He should be motivated also because we're going to be hosting his project also, am I right?
That's exactly right. You will be the host of his project, a partial off-taker of the project. And while there's not any real obligation on the part of the town, it is taking some of your host capacity.
Okay, if it's not going to hurt us for the week, I would suggest that we do that. I still feel strongly about going all with Rockwood, but let's give it a week, see what Mike has to say then, as long as Beth feels that we're safe and not losing out.
Right. I just feel better to actually talk to him and see, because we did have an offer with him.
Yeah, and I could hear that in your voice. I know you, and I think it's fair to ask him the question. You know, if he was trying to do something else, and it was some family issues. I will also, one other thing I was just going to tell you, I think it was about the Rockwood proposal. The other, oh, the other thing you could do is, if for some reason, the consensus of your group is you want to go 100% with the digester, there's no reason why the town cannot offer to EPNG to continue to host the project, which helps him get net metering capacity in the public, under the public cap, which is exactly what he really wants to do. So even if you end up deciding, again, I'm not advising anything, I'm just giving you your options so you know, if you decided to go with the digester 100%, you still have the ability, if you so desire, to be the host and not be an off-taker. Many municipalities have done that. And maybe there's some small compensation that comes to you from Mike. But you become the host, you get him his net metering capacity in the public cap, and then he can go sell the generation to other municipalities. So that's still on the table in the event that, you know, it was something you were interested in doing. So do you want, Ken, do you want me to reach out to Mike and see if he can come to your meeting next Monday?
That would be fine, Beth. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes, please do.
Yes, okay. 7:30?
That would be good. We started seven, but...
Yeah, we have other things ahead of that, so yeah, 7:30 would be good.
Okay, I'll tell him 7:30 PM, and I'll call Sinead representing Rockwood Digester and just ask her if she can give us a week to make the decision whether we're going with 220 or all of, you know, the full amount.
And she'd be welcome to come here, of course. Right?
Absolutely.
I guess my question is, is what would you want her to be there for?
Every time, it seems like something else comes up.
Well, she, they have not changed their offer since the last time we spoke. So nothing changed with ACD, with the digester. That had changed, oh, by sometime around the end of the year, the early part of the... The last, the last update, the last time we spoke, was on around February 1st. And that's when they had revised their offer based on the smaller amount of capacity that we were taking. But that was one that the board voted in favor of proceeding with. And we, myself and Ken and town council, negotiated the terms of the contract with them, finalized that, and you have a partially executed agreement in your hands. So I'm not sure she has anything else to, she's happy to give you more capacity and give you an extra boost on it. But at minimum, she's anticipating that the town would execute the contract that it has in hand.
Yeah, let's just concentrate on Mike. We know what we got with Rockwood.
Yeah, we got a lot of chance to say what he has to say.
And I'll create sort of a list of questions that, Ken, if you want me to, I'll send to you and to Mike, and say, "Be prepared to answer this," you know, to fill the board in with all of this information. And then you guys ask questions, look him in the face and see if you feel confident he's going to be successful.
That's fair enough.
Right? I think that's a...
Sure.
Okay.
Excellent. Anything else?
No. Anyone else? Questions? I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Hello.
Wow.
Well, lots to think about. Okay, next on the agenda, item 10, Hazard Mitigation Plan and MVP Proposal. Dan?
Thank you very much for hearing us this evening. We're moving along with the hazard mitigation plan. We want to update the select board where we are at the present stage. I'm going to ask Lauren Garrity from BRPC to explain exactly what we have going on here. She knows it better than I do.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you for having us this evening. So as you may have heard, of course, your regional planning commission is working with Dan and the emergency management committee to try to update the hazard mitigation plan. Your existing plan expired in 2012, and we're updating that and making sure that it's FEMA-approved so that you could apply for FEMA funding. So I just wanted to give you a little update on where we are, sort of what some of the major findings are. And what you have in your hand is the same thing as this poster. And I can just pass this out for the audience as well. I just printed out some... You know, what we do is we look at several different hazards. FEMA requires that we look at 16 hazards because the state of Massachusetts looked at 16. It's nor'easters, it's blizzards, it's ice jams, it's floods, it's drought. It's all those things we think about, Mother Nature, natural hazards. And what, we just kind of wanted to look historically at Berkshire County and then historically at Dalton itself. What are the hazards we're facing? What do residents and businesses face? And here's just some of the findings to give everyone a quick update on that. You know, flooding is something we have quite often. Many of the roads flood. Some of the culverts can't handle the floodwaters. So that's kind of a common thing. We looked at some of the most dangerous disasters in Berkshire County. Things like tornadoes and dam failures actually are the ones that come once in a blue moon or very seldom, and the risk is low, but they are more devastating. There is loss of life. We had those... We had those, uh, those tornadoes down in West Dockridge and Barrington. Dalton had a small tornado a couple of years ago, but, um, it was very little damage. So, even though Dalton did experience a tornado, luckily it was very small. So, we look historically at all those things, and that starts to help us with risk. Um, the events in Dalton that sort of come to the forefront, um, you have had severe flooding. You've had some evacuations of the Mobile Home Park. So, um, there was, you know, there was some impacts and people suffered damages in that. Um, Tropical Storm Irene, North County had a 100-year storm. So, North County, I think everyone saw in the paper where the Spruce's Mobile Home Park, uh, was lost forever. And that was over 200 units, those 200 households that were forever moved. They had to move out of their homes forever and had to find other places to go. Here in Dalton, Tropical Storm Irene was only a 50-year flood. And yet, there was flooding here, there was evacuations at Palmeroy Manor. So, there were damages and suffering here, but it wasn't to the, the same degree as North County. So, it's sort of a, a milestone for you to think, okay, Irene in 2011 was a 50-year storm in Dalton. That gives us some kind of a, a milestone or a bellwether. What if there were a 100-year storm? How much more devastating would it be? So, these are the kind of things we try to think about. And if we had flooding at Palmeroy Manor at the 50-year storm, what might it be later? So, those are the kinds of things we try to look at and say, in the town, what, and that's still no guarantee that we're going to have a 100-year storm in our lifetimes in 100 years or 200 years. We might have a 100-year storm in five years. We might have three of them in 10 years. It's all just a probabilities test. But it does give us something to think about. So, looking at all of that, we do look at the floodplain, which is boundaries that we have, easier to regulate, tornadoes are unpredictable, things like ice jams are less predictable. So, we have floodplain, and that's how we have those firm maps of the floodplain. And we, you know, Dalton does have 90 properties in the floodplain. So, if there were a 100-year storm, there could be 90 properties that are impacted. So, that could be residences and buildings. So, we start to look at that, and it gives us an idea of where we might want to think about mitigation, where do we want to think about preparedness? So, that's what this does, and we kind of lay out that out in maps. In looking at all these different things, um, we start to look at what the risk is. And we look at things like Nessicus being the shelter. Nessicus is out of the 100-year floodplain, but number one, the floodplain boundaries were done in 1982. So, they're a little bit out of date. Even then, that was an estimate. So, we had to look at Nessicus and say, it's at risk. If it were needed as a shelter, would it be available? And being on the very edge of the floodplain, that's a concern. So, we raise that in here. If it had to be used, would it be available? So, that is a concern, just be looking at things like that. One of the actions might be, is there another opportunity to do a feasibility study on a different property for a shelter? One that's clearly out of the floodplain. One that might work just as well. So, an action comes out of that to try to secure a sheltering to make sure that if that 100-year storm came by, you'd have the sheltering that you need for your residences. So, there's an example of an action, is to start to investigate possibility of something else. FEMA is redoing the floodbank, flood, uh, flood property boundaries. They've, they've done it for most of the state, they haven't done Berkshire County yet. They say the Housatonic Watershed, which we're in, is next on the list, but there's no real, uh, confirmed, uh, promise to update those boundaries. So, that keeps Nessicus even a little bit more of a risk as we still aren't having that boundary redone with new technology. I would say we would want to monitor that, and the minute that they come out with new firm maps and boundaries, look at that carefully and look at all the properties and say, who's in, who's out, things like that. So, that's another action, let's monitor that. So, the actions we have, there's just a handful. Um, one of that is Walker Brook. The town's already pursuing mitigation for the Walker Brook flooding around the senior center and the old school. FEMA had, you have a grant with FEMA. Obviously, action is continued that. Another action might be, and, and Dan has just applied for a second grant at, uh, a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. It's a new state grant. That might be another option to look at things, and it might be another funding source. So, an action might be, um, do a planning for that grant. It's a slightly, it was a climate change, but it might be another funding source. So, there's another action. Make sure we get all of the planning in place that you can apply for more funding. Just in case FEMA doesn't fit something, this new one might. So, things like that. Um, you know, we, we know that, um, Center Pond has lost capacity. It's a run, uh, the dam is a run of river. There's just not a lot of storage capacity. So, when Irene was here, the flooding was very, very close to overtopping that bridge on Main Street. It's a critical bridge for transportation and might be a needed transportation route for evacuations if there had to be any. It also has utilities on it. So, Center Pond is a concern that's been risen again because of the lack of storage capacity. That's not going to be an easy fix. Dredging is a tough thing to do, lots of permitting, uh, a lot of hydraulics that have to be done engineering-wise. But again, it's raised as an issue. So, if it was that close to the bridge on Main Street, a 50-year storm, what would a 100 be? So, these are the kind of things we look at. Code Red is a phenomenal asset that the town has, but more and more people have cellphones. And some people now have cellphones, but not landlines. Somehow, continue to, um, really promote Code Red because if you have a cellphone, you have to enroll yourself. You're not automatically enrolled at the landline. So, do we continue to get the word out so that folks who move into town, folks who are changing, switching out from a landline to a new cellphone, or they get a new cellphone number, they have to write, re-enlist? So, things like that, the preparedness piece. So, it's not a lot of crazy, big actions, but there are actions that will be in the plan and will make that available. So, next steps, we've drafted this plan, we've worked with Dan and the committee. We want to get the draft sections of the plan to the committee for review and comment. That I want to do in the next couple of weeks. Then we want to come back and bring this back to town boards for review. The select board, hopefully we can come back and talk to you about the findings. And then hear from the public. Put that plan out for public review. What do the residents and the business owners think? Have we got it right? Are we missing something? And that's once we do all of that, we have the public review, we might have an open house, invite people to come in and see what the results are. Get this to FEMA, get it approved, and then you're good for another five years for your FEMA plan. In the meantime, if successful, um, you'd have the MVP program coming up, a little bit more planning, focusing on climate change instead of just historic, what have our, our disasters been? And maybe have a little bit of extra funding. Another, you know, another tool in the toolbox. So, that's where we are. Uh, and I, I know I'm talking a lot, but I know that you're also very busy and, um, I welcome any questions you have. We can certainly answer more questions. Uh, we welcome input for you, any input you want to give us, uh, or from the public. We'll be putting things on the website. So, that's it, just sort of a quick and dirty update on where we are.
I have a question for you or a concern.
Yeah.
Up at Weston Pond, there's this huge tree that's hanging in there, basically falling into the river right near the bridge.
At Weston Pond?
At Center Pond.
Center Pond.
Center Pond, yes. We've heard about that.
And if that breaks loose, that's going to take out that town water line that goes underneath that bridge. Is there anything that anybody in town can do about that? I know we've asked about it a couple of times.
I know you have, and I know Dan's been at wit's end, and it's been permitting issues, and it sounds like almost a landowner issue.
It could be.
Who's, who owns the land? I don't know. It, it seems to me that there must be something about an emergency order that could be done, but I haven't looked into that myself. I don't know. I know it's a huge issue because it is.
There's two members on the Conservation Commission here that would be more than willing to...
Yeah.
...let that happen.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Lauren.
Yeah.
If I may, just addressing that issue. Um, we talked with training company, who at one point in time owned the, owned the property. Um, and they were, uh, they didn't feel there was anything that they could do with it. Uh, we've spoken with, uh, the DEP, uh, we've spoken with State Highway, uh, to see if they could help us, Mass DOT could help us get it off of there. Uh, presently, what it is, is we're working on, uh, getting a hold of the, the present owners of the property, which is, uh, I skipped my mind.
Berkshire National Resources Council? That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Uh, to try to coordinate with them, uh, as to what to do. We've had the town highway go take a look at it also about what it would be, if you run into just, so many questions of, uh, jurisdiction, who can get it? And that's, that's what we're looking for and trying to get through with that. That is something that Ken and I have been beating our heads against the wall about for...
That's us for many years.
Since Irene, actually, because that was...
Yeah.
...uprooted during Irene.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is something that's on our list that we're looking at.
Anything you need from us as far as conservation or whatever?
Yeah. We've already gotten a lot of support from Conservation. We've already had DEP say, if we need to take it out, they're willing to work with us on it, but there's other issues that we have to make sure that we do it, that when we do it, we do it legally. Uh, I would be very happy to grab the chainsaw, put that there and cut it up and pull it out there, but we're not allowed to just do that.
I see nothing.
Unfortunately, it's not you we have to worry about.
Yeah. Yeah. That has been raised as far as the plan as well.
Okay. Anything else?
No, it's a lot of work and you've gone, given us a lot of information.
Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Well, no, thank you. Um, you know, it's, it's been a good group, um, and people have been very, uh, very engaged. So, it's good.
Is there, oh, I got one quick question.
Yeah.
Is there any study on our rivers and streams about how either they're losing capacity or gaining capacity? No, they're gaining capacity.
Uh, you know, there are street, the, the stream gauge that would go, you'd go by mostly would be the one, there's a USGS stream gauge right down Coldsville. So, that's the one that has determined that Irene was a 50-year storm. We looked at that stream gauge. Um, I don't know what the trends are, I'm not a hydrologist. Um, we have had some indications that precipitation is increasing. We know that, um, storms are coming, uh, less evenly and they're coming in bigger bursts, which is straining all the, the culverts and the stream beds. I'm not sure we have that down to a watershed level yet. Um, it would be something we'd have to see from USGS, and using that stream gauge would be perfect, uh, because it's just downstream from Dalton and it would reflect your watershed perfectly. Um, I don't know if we are there yet. There's been projections. Uh, we do know there's more rain, we know it's more severe at times. We don't know what's going to happen with drought. Um, it could be more cyclical with droughts just because we're getting warmer temperatures, there's more evaporation. I think we still don't know. It's still all in flux. There has been a stepped increase from the seventies on precipitation, but it's still only a block of 40, 50 years. So, we still don't have that 200-year history to, to tell us if it's a short-term thing, if it's going to continue to go up, we just don't know at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate everything you guys are doing.
No, thank you.
We had two things on the agenda as to that. The other one was the MVP grant. Um, that was something that Lauren assisted, uh, the town planner Becky and myself worked on, um, to get it together. Uh, once again, it was one of the, um, it was a grant opportunity that, that the state opened and gave us a short response time on it. Um, so, we worked on it, uh, and we presented, we had to present it to the state for last Friday. In our presentation of the grant, we stated that we were going to present it to the select board this evening for their approval of going forward on the grant. I apologize for the timeframe coming to you after the fact, but we literally, we had 14 days to work on the grant. Uh, so, uh, we gave copies of the grant to you for your review, uh, were willing to answer any questions you may have on it. Um, and, uh, what we're just seeking is your approval to go forward with it.
Sure.
When do you need that by, do you?
Uh, should be this evening.
Yesterday.
Yeah. My, uh, last Thursday, actually, or Wednesday when we shipped it in, but no. Uh, tonight, we've, we've, it's why we brought it to you this evening. And this is for the planning stage of the grant. The MVP grant is basically, uh, it's kind of a continuation of the hazard mitigation plan, what we have. We're going to take the next steps with it. This is the planning stage of this. This is where we're going to put together a plan and present a plan to the state saying, look at, this is what we think we can do, this is what we want to do. And from there, we would apply for another grant, an action grant, um, at a later point. So, um, this is just step one of this two-part process.
Okay. Jack?
I see you've got several letters in here from Department Heads, including the town manager of support in this. This is just something you want from the select board, um, in addition to what you already have, correct?
Basically, yes.
Okay. It's well-written. As I was telling you earlier, I thought it was a very good grant application.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, nice.
In such a short period of time. I didn't know it was such a short period of time too, so it's very good.
And I can't stress it, can't stress how much Becky, helpful she was with the information she has as a town planner, uh, for coming forward with things like this. Yeah, very good.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, send a letter in support of the grant, um, as soon as possible, like today.
I second that.
Okay, yeah. Two seconds.
Two seconds.
Okay, motion been made in double second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
It's great work.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask you for your help on this next one here? You know, I just asked for an emergency on this one.
Emergency declaration?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of information here. You may remember getting a, a, some of a late in the evening email from me a, a week or so ago, um, well, two weeks ago now, because we had a rupture of the sewer line going under the Housatonic Street High Bridge. And there's a memorandum that Dan Filio wrote, and I want to thank Dan for all the work you did that evening, helping John roughly to do the proper notifications of the affected, of the affected communities downstream of the site. I thank him for getting me up at 10 o'clock at night, getting me back to the bridge. Uh, you'll see in there as well, there's a, a estimate of cost to repair the, just the line. That does not include emergency pumping that's been going on. So, the reason for this emergency declaration is because it helps us, we, we are going to spend, just like snow and ice, in excess of our appropriation to get this job done. And we will probably have to, um, use a procurement process that is not ordinarily used in these situations. So, this emergency declaration does both of those things. We have to notify the Department of Revenue that we're going to be spending in excess of appropriation, just like we do with snow and ice. And so, this emergency declaration does that. I also provided in your packet, uh, a copy of the drawings that I had last night. These have been since updated and professionally stamped, just so you could see what's going on. Shows you the line, shows you the water coming out of the line. And if you've been down that way, you see what's been put in place. There's a pumping system so that this line has been bypassed and the affluent is being pumped up along the roadway and then back into the line on the other side of the bridge. And, uh, that requires two people 24 hours a day. So, you can imagine what that costs. And so, the more quickly we get the repair done. Now, the repairs, uh, they're going to cut out a piece of pipe, they're going to put a stainless steel sleeve in there, recouple it, and they've got a couple of hanger brackets. But we've had involved two engineering firms, one that works with Mascot on Bridges and our own engineering firm kind of, who's been doing the service for us. our own engineering firm kind of doing the service for us. So it's been a complicated little process, but we're ready to go out to bid, and your declaration of an official emergency will help us to get the job done. Are there any questions about any of this?
We can't get any emergency funding anywhere from another source, can we?
We've been, we've been looking at, you know, Dan has checked with the emergency management. I've checked with our insurer to see if they can file a claim.
Yeah.
No. Simple answers, no. And the, my estimate for the cost right now is about $150,000.
I think you're low.
Yeah, I probably am.
But, yeah.
Has DEP responded positively for us?
Well, yes, we notified DEP. The day we found out about the break, the highway superintendent called DEP, who urgently urged us to get somebody on board to get that pumping done immediately. So we were, we were ahead of the curve on that, because John Roughly did an excellent job getting it from there, that could set up the bypass system. The next day, he followed up with EPA as well, because we're in the Pittsfield system, EPA had to be notified. So EPA's been notified, DEP's been notified, DEP was on site that evening that the break occurred.
Okay.
May I ask Dan a question?
Absolutely.
When you contacted all these other towns?
Yes.
Just, what was their reaction?
Amazement, in the most part, about, there was a concern. Initially, when we were calling the people, we were under the impression that the flow was going directly into the river.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of discussion about downstream problems and stuff like that. There was amazement, but they were also very pleased with the fact that we got a hold of them as quickly as possible. They were able, we talked to both the emergency managers and the boards of health. They were able to start their, their wheels turning about what they had to do to address what needed to be done. Fortunately, later on, we discovered that the, where the, it was actually liquid only coming out of the pipe, it was landing on the riprap, and the riprap would act as a filter.
Not good.
So there was less of a contaminant getting into the river than we had first thought. The quick response by John Roughly and the company that he brought in to stop and help prevent further, and that I'm aware of, we're still waiting for reports on the contamination. But the other communities were pleased with the fact we got a hold of them as quickly as we did.
Say, the sampling was done in the river, I didn't see any results yet, but the emergency, the firm that responded immediately built a sump where the bypass was put in place so that the effluent could be, you know, sucked out of there and not go into the river.
Wow. Thank you for that, Dan.
Yeah.
That was a lot of work.
Okay, the motion to...
Make a motion to declare an emergency for the sewer line rupture on East Houstonian Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ken, should we sign this one that I had?
Yeah, sign the original. Have it through the record.
Here. Have we decided?
Oh, Jesus. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you for catching that. You're a very pushy person.
Thirty percents.
Very, very, very good. Thank you, John, for catching me.
Thank you. Yeah.
Sorry, Mark.
Something the con...
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I like it the way it is.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, police department budget transfer request. Chief, go.
Sure, I'll try to make this brief, but I certainly have documentation if you would like more of an explanation. Back in February of 2017, I came to this board and the Finance Committee and pitched my FY 2018 budget, and I stated that I was anticipating two full-time officers with about five years' experience leaving us for the state police, and therefore, my crystal ball said I was concerned about the budget as I was submitting it. As we know, those two officers did leave us, went to the state police successfully, passed, and they're currently working in Cheshire and we're happy for them. However, we were left with filling two full-time vacancies and then hiring, promoting from our ranks of part-timers, two full-time officers who are attending a 26-week academy. It hit this fiscal budget for 21 weeks per person, so that's 40 hours per person, that's 80 hours for 21 weeks that we've been paying to backfill while we're paying them to be at the academy. Not only that, we had officer injuries on two different occasions during this fiscal year that totaled another 40-hour position, full-time position on two different occasions, but a total of 21 weeks. So for 21 weeks, we've had to fill three full-time vacancies. We were able to do that with, so normally, on a normal budget, we have four vacancies per week average to fill for vacation and personal time, no one vacation per person. We fill those four vacancies per week mainly with the use of part-timers, so our budget is very sound. Instead of the four using part-timers, we have 18, for 21 weeks, we've had 18 vacancies per week that we've had to fill. We're able to fill 10 of those with part-time reduced salary. Five of those 10 is with a temporary full-time, so it's still a reduce from overtime of a full-time officer. So 10 of the 18 shifts per week for 21 weeks, we're still paying reduced, but the other eight, I've had no other choice but to fill it with the full timers at a higher rate. So I calculated, and I know that I need approximately $69,000 extra to make my budget. Where I'm asking you to get that from, you have two requests in front of you. One is for a request from, for $60,000 from the Communications Salary Line, the account is 222, into my 210 police salary. The reason why I know that $60,000 is there, and I confirmed with the Communications Director and the town accountant, is that if you recall, we budget for that one, their, the whole entire communications budget, I believe it's about $120,000 a year, but we also get a grant that reimburses it because we are a regional dispatch center. So normally, what happens at the end of the fiscal year is that money goes back into the general fund. So what I'm asking is to take $60,000, again, I'm assured it's there, and so it won't have an effect on reserve, the reserve or free cash. It's already budgeted in last year's tax budget season. The second one is, I was able to try to not spend as much as possible this year, which left $9,000 for my expense that I am asking you to approve that be brought over from 210 expense to 210 salary to help me get through the year. I know that my current budget will last until June 3rd. For the June 10th payroll, I will need money. I'll have three pay periods left in the fiscal year, and we're averaging about $20,000. So even the simpler math than what I just said, is three weeks left times the 20 we've been averaging, you get $60,000. That's the simple of it. I have backing, a normal schedule versus a schedule that I'm having to fill, and what the numbers mean broken down very quickly. I can give it to you for your, if you'd like to see it later, or if you want to discuss it further, I certainly, Ken. Thank you.
Can we do these separate?
I make a motion to approve the chief's request to transfer $9,000 from account 210 police expense to account 210 police salary.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Make all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to approve the chief's request to transfer from account 222 Communications to account 210 Police Salary in the amount of $60,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Make all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Sorry, one of these days we'll be full staffed and we'll be watching it very well for it.
Doing well, though.
Thank you.
Under all circumstances. Okay, item 13, we'll call the school committee and Central for Southern Region School District Reports. John?
There's not much to report. School committee is business as usual. There's nothing remarkable that I can report on, that I need to report on. As for the school building project, this last meeting, which I was unable to attend because of another one here, we approved the minutes of the previous meeting so that the packet for the educational plan could be sent to the MSBA for approval in, I believe, three weeks. Within three weeks, they send back their remarks, and then we have a couple weeks to respond. So right now, that's where we're at. And again, continuing to work with the project manager and the architect as for what's going on. So there'll be more to come in the fall. There are some meetings, community meetings coming up, I believe in July, and I will let you know on those dates.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Okay, item 14, June STM initial draft, schedule and warrant. Mr. Walton?
Well, you can see the schedule in front of you, so I guess the first thing you could do is to have me confirm that we'll have the special town meeting at the usual time, which is the last Monday in June. That would be June 25th, 2017. And you can see the milestones that we have to, and tasks we have to achieve as we prepare for that June 25th meeting. And so, first thing I have for you, Ben, is a proposed set of warrant articles for that meeting. And I'll go through them one by one. You can stop and ask me questions if there are any. Some, first ones are the usual suspects, because we typically do the capital budget at that meeting. So the first article would be an appropriation out of our stabilization accounts for the capital items, and I don't have that together for you. We'll have that as we go along, if you look at your schedule, the very latest, so it would be before you on June 11th. The second would be any borrowing that may be required to accomplish the capital improvement program. Both, the first two require a two-thirds vote. The third would be to transfer money among accounts if we need to. There's a note at the bottom, one of the articles, there's a snow and ice, too, because we, at some point in time, we'll have to cure the snow and ice deficit. We can do that, as the chief did here tonight, because in May and June, the Select Board and Finance Committee can move money between accounts, and we don't necessarily have to go to town meeting. So this is a bit of a defensive article in case there's something that's beyond our capability and we have to go to town meeting for it. Article four would make any adjustments to the FY 19 budget that we may need to make before the start of the fiscal year. Article five would be to cure the deficit for sewage treatment. You'll remember that the bill from the city of Pittsfield is about $90,000, almost $100,000 more for treatment expenses than we had budgeted, so we'll have to take care of that.
What's in the account?
There was $900 to pay the city of Pittsfield, and I think the bill was $990.
No, no, I mean, what's in the stabilization? It's about 200 or 220?
200, yeah, it's two and something, yeah. Yeah, so about, with the appropriation that was made at the annual town meeting, we'll have to take about half of it out, so.
Can that be used for the break?
Of course, if we need to. Yeah.
Although, probably won't cover the whole thing, but...
No, I anticipate we're going to cover it. Some borrowings.
Okay.
Article seven is the chapter, you know, it often takes time for the state to settle on Chapter 90 appropriations, so this would appropriate Chapter 90 monies. That's Article six. Article seven, we've got some, sometimes, you know, bills just, they come in late, and you have to go to a town meeting to pay them once the fiscal year in which they were incurred has passed. Article eight is the article you approved to delete Chapter 290 on swimming pools from the town code. Article nine is the same one, but those are both recommended, you'll remember, by the building inspector, to change some wording for the solar, large-scale solar portable tank installations. And that requires two-thirds because it's zoning bylaw. Number 10 is changes recommended by the Stormwater Management Commission to reduce from nine to seven, the total amount of members, and you can see the language there that would do that. Number 11 is the bylaw. Now, since the town meeting turned down the extension of the moratorium, I've been talking to our town planner about whether we may be able to go forward with the actual bylaw. In your packet tonight is a copy of the bylaw. As it stands, the planning board will look at this Wednesday night, but here it is. I've read it, I have some personal reservations about it, but here it is. So it could go forward to town meeting if you want this article to be on there, and the planning board acts in time to have a public hearing and render it forward to town meeting.
Yeah, what's the, there has to be notification, is it two weeks for a public hearing?
I think it's 14 days, so, so the schedule Becky's worked out would have a public hearing on the 20th of June.
Oh, right before the 20th.
Just before the meeting, yeah.
Is that enough time?
Yes. I mean, right on the schedule works. So if you choose to have this on the warrant and recommend this, yeah, this will go, be transmitted to the planning board for their review tomorrow. And as I said, the planning board will get it on Wednesday, and then this public hearing will be scheduled. So also in this packet was a lot of the latest information that Becky Slutkin had from attending some conferences on marijuana bylaws for your information. Now, if you choose not to do that, it just means that, well, a companion article is 12. 12 brings the moratorium back, and we can bring it back if we would like to, because the planning board had recommended the moratorium, or now if the planning board hadn't recommended it, it would be a two-year hiatus before we bring this back. So we can bring this back, and even if you decide you want to go ahead with Article 11, I would say have 12 on there, because we would take no action if they were passed. Or if town meeting doesn't pass Article 11 for some reason, you can fall back on 12. Again, it's a kind of a defensive article.
Sounds good.
Article 13, and you should all have, I should say, draft number one revised, to be what you're looking at, because they added an Article 14 like this afternoon. But Article 13, you remember it some time ago, Slutkin Bartels had asked that we take a look at how we're investing our OPEB trust money to see if we could perhaps do better. And I can be in a small advisory group, we've been working since last December, looked at a couple of proposals from the private sector and from the state's retiree benefit trust. It was our unanimous conclusion that to recommend that we go into the state's retiree benefit trust, because, I'll describe it briefly, the state has $71 billion in pension funds that it manages. It's a very sophisticated operation, and the state law allows us to take our hopes of our OPEB money, and they just put it in that fund, and they manage it with the rest of the state pension funds. So I was very impressed. We got an unhesitating recommendation from the executive director of our retirement system, who's been working with the state benefit trust for the past 20 years, and all of our retirement money in the Berkshire County Retirement System is there. Lennox and Stockbridge are also in the system as our 63, 63 other communities for their OPEB funds. 90% of the town, of the cities and towns in Massachusetts are in the state pension fund. Very few manage their own. So it really is a, it's a pretty sure bet. If achieved, a consistent rate of about 9.5% returns through years.
Oh, 9.5?
Yeah.
That's over...
Yeah, that's over 30 years.
Can I throw that forward?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. So it's the closest thing we have to a sure thing, and with the state, there's the state, the state is in back of this, because they can't, I guarantee anything, but the state's got to make this work. We all depend on it. So I'm pretty confident that it's the right decision for us to make. Last, and we have to do this, let me just say that, this has to be done prior to the state fund looking at it. Okay, so if we went to a private fund, we could, we could probably just invest it, but we can't do it this way. In any event, the Municipal Modernization Act sets, makes us re-accept, is it, yeah, it's 32B Section 20, which the town accepted originally in 2012. We have to re-accept it, creates a little bit different kind of trust that money not only goes in, right now it goes in, doesn't come out. It can come out. So, that being said, move on to Article 14. And this, again, is a, I overlooked this, and when I looked at the information that Becky gave me this afternoon, I said we ought to add this to it as well. It's my recommendation that we impose the excise tax on the retail sales of marijuana. It's like the, oh, it's like the meals tax. It's up to 3% and takes a simple vote.
Is that what other towns have put on there?
I think most are going with a 3%.
Yes.
And that would be, aside from any host community agreement, should we have a marijuana establishment come into town, but that's already existence state law and simply has to be negotiated. Town has to accept this if we want to impose the excise.
Is that what other towns have put on there?
I think most are going with a 3%. And that would be, aside from any host community agreement, sure, we have a marijuana establishment come into town, but that's already existence state law and simply has to be negotiated. Town has to accept this if we want to impose the excise.
You got it? Okay. Item 15, Alnado Stoll, some of my thunder, we talked about the meeting that's coming up with the Cable, Cable Commission. I'm gonna do my best to get our, the chair of that committee to get a meeting together so everybody can sit and talk before we have this meeting and make sure that everybody knows what's going on. And I had a long meeting today with our engineering consultants for the old Dalton High demolition, and I'm pleased to report to you that we are on schedule. We're heading for demolition, November, December. We've been told that's the best time period to do a demolition, we'll get the best prices, we'll keep the dust and all the particulates down, so we're working through all the details. We're not ready yet to give you a plan, take a look at, but the kind of very preliminary layout would show seven lots in the, in the part where the building's being demolished, and that's a very, it's very raw and preliminary.
May I bring up a question? I went to a meeting at Council on Aging, and they're very concerned about losing parking spaces, particularly in November and December when they have large events, Veterans Day and Christmas gatherings, and they were wondering what the plan is for parking spaces, because they anticipated that schools coming down there, there'd be, there'd be a lot of equipment, there'd be obviously a shortage of spaces, so...
Right.
Does anyone have an idea?
We just, we just spent a bit of time not only discussing that, but what's the eventual layout of parking.
Right. They were wondering about that also, yes.
So they're working on a plan for overflow parking and fencing it such that we leave enough room for people to park. Don't know yet whether we'll have all that space that's there, because as you understand, you know, we've got heavy equipment there, it's called, it'll be fenced off, fenced off, stay all winter. And so that's, that's a difficult problem, but we're aware of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Question on the old Dalton High, is there any way, somebody asked me, is there any way to take some, a few of the bricks or something, and a couple of the stones from the window sills and make a little monument over there?
Yeah, we can, you know, and glad you brought that up, because we did discuss, is there anything we want to salvage there? So if anybody, you know, comes up with an idea and you approve it, we'll see that it's incorporated.
It'd be pretty neat to put it over by a senior center of parking, so it won't be in the middle of houses, but...
Well, I like that, that's really good, you know, little bit of history saved.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's it for my updates.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Items for future agendas, as there are many. My remarks of the Select Board.
The two are, they're really good, scheduled a meeting for next Monday, May 21st. Some things we've got to take care of.
Need a vote on that, or we just, I'm gonna go ahead and...
The chair can set meeting dates at any time.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from that, so I'm referring it to Mark, because there's gonna be a license for the stationary factory, I'm with your license, part of it.
Yeah, but the other part is...
Well, that's okay, I mean, you can schedule the meeting.
Okay, I just didn't want to overstep bounds there.
Okay, you can schedule it for any time you want to.
Okay, then we'll schedule a special meeting this Monday, okay? Okay, any other remarks? I have a couple. The town received, or the Select Board received a letter from a private citizen for Officer James Dura, where he went above and beyond the call of duty, and I think we should start recognizing our police department when they get these things, because, I tell you what, they don't have it easy, and I really appreciate his efforts, and I won't go into details of what he did because we don't want to mention names, but congratulations, James, and keep up the good work. And I also want to point out our highway department again, I mean, with the sewer break on Daley Avenue, they saved this town a ton of money doing all the work themselves. So I don't know how many thousands and thousands of dollars they save, but it's just totally amazing how much these guys can do when given the opportunity.
You know, on that note, if you think about it, this spring, the number of sewer breaks we've had...
Four major ones, four.
Major, tells us what our infrastructure is like with that system.
Yeah, I was talking to John, he said it's all, it's all pretty bad.
And a sign of that is the fact that we have water going into our sewer pipes from our stormwater.
Oh, absolutely.
That, you know, that's a very bad sign, the amount of water that's going in.
And we pay for that, too, if it's treated. Anybody else?
No, I would like to say about Officer Durye, is Durye correct? Pronunciation. Officer Durye, I heard about that from one of my passengers on the, on the van, and they were, I think that person was directly involved in what he did, and it was, it was amazing the time he took and made the personal effort...
Right.
...to help the individual at that time, and it's commendable.
Yeah. I feel Dalton's very lucky with the police department, highway department, even all the employees here at the town hall, and actually, the fire department, I mean, we're very blessed to have these people. They care about their jobs, and I really appreciate it. At the end of my first term, it's just like, holy smokes, this is, I have a bigger understanding of what goes on here.
It's funny that this isn't even brought up, because I thought about this earlier today, and how many negative things get brought up, brought up, and brought up, and people don't even mention a positive thing, but they'll keep hammering negative, negative, negative. Between the police departments, the fire departments, the highway departments, Dalton beautification, the veterans, the teachers, the school system, the town employees, I mean, we live in a pretty amazing community, and I feel bad if I missed anybody, but it's always, hammers the negative, and sometimes after hearing the negative, the negative from a person, it loses its bite, because you don't, if you're not saying anything positive, and now you talk about the negative, really loses its bite, and it really doesn't mean much to me after that. So, but thank you to everybody, we live in an amusing, an amazing community.
Right. I was a little bit concerned by, at the town meeting, when there was talk about, you know, we're trying to be a police state or the police or, we do not go out of our way to be issuing tickets, we go out of our way to get people to, you know, obey the regulations. They do a really great job at actually achieving that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mike. Okay. What I've been waiting for. Reorganization of the Select Board. It's that time of year, you're going to reorganize. I will entertain a motion for chair.
I make a motion that we have Bob Bishop continue as chair because he's done an outstanding job.
Uh, no.
You haven't done an outstanding job?
No, I appreciate it, Bob. I would like to step aside and...
I make a motion that John Bartels for, for chair.
I will second that. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, it's not that I don't appreciate it.
No, that's, alright.
I really appreciate it, but all those in favor?
Aye. I thought we had a quick discussion. I was going to say I was in favor of it during the discussion. Okay, now we can vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, a motion for vice chair.
I make a motion for Bob Bishop for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. And I will, I will accept that. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. So, Mr. Chair?
Well, thank you for another opportunity to be chair, and thank you, Bob, for your, well, it's been a year, year and a half that you've been doing it.
Yeah, likewise for you before that.
Yeah, and it's, it's challenging at times and rewarding at other times, but as long as we, we work together. So I think what Mark was saying about the positives, we really need to focus on that a lot more than what maybe we have.
Absolutely.
Because it does get a little, well, it wears you out a bit, so. But thanks again for your support, and I appreciate that.
Take care of your act, yeah?
Thanks.
Since you're the new chair, your word welcomes, read your announcements.
May 13th to May 19th is National Police Week. Tomorrow, May 15th, is Pete's Officers Memorial Day. The Select Board calls upon citizens of the town to honor and remember those law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service of their community. The flag at town hall will be flown at half-staff in their honor. The veterans' agent office hours are Wednesdays from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the town hall and from 11:40 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the senior center. Services for Dalton veterans are now available Monday through Friday through the North Adams Veterans Service Department. Call 413-662-3040. Public Power is a town supplier for the municipal electrical aggregation program. You will see that name as a supplier of electricity on your Eversource bill unless you have another supplier. To opt in or out of the program, go online to colonialpowergroup.com/Dalton, or call Public Power at 1-800-830-2944. The Conservation Commission is looking for new members. If interested, please contact the town manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. Please note that Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the town hall, and from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The building inspector office hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., Tuesday, 8 a.m. to 12:30. And an additional announcement, once I have reorganized myself, I plan on having office hours again. They'll probably be Thursdays. At our next meeting, I will announce the times and how you can, how you can reach me. I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel in litigation in the consideration of purchasing value of real property, and that return to open session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
We're now in executive session, recess for five minutes.
Thank you.